That was one fun.
It was fun.
Con this meeting in order. This is the committee of the whole, July 12th. Roll call. We have several councillors not here. Councillor De La Cruz, councillor Watson, and councillor Perezati not here. Everybody else is here. Any calendar and/or communications? Anybody?
Calendar, thanks. I have a list.
Okay.
But I'll just turn it in. I went to a lot of the submarine.
Well, and then, and I, okay.
Do you want to talk about that?
Well, you, I think traditionally, we do that on the-
The regular.
Regular.
Yeah.
But if there's something that you wanted to get out for sure, maybe-
No, wait can wait.
Okay. Is there minutes to approve?
Yes.
Would you like to move the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by councillor Norv, the second by councillor Antipas on the minute. Any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Is there any unfinished business? Anybody? Okay. Moving on to new business. Our first item is 2016-0181, market analysis presentation. I believe John Reiner and Paige Bronk are here to wow us. We just got a, we just got the handout.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development. And with me tonight is Paige Bronk, Community Economic Development Manager. I certainly don't want to disappoint. I don't know how much we're going to wow you tonight because we weren't actually planning on doing the presentation tonight. We're going to do that at the next council of the whole meeting. But what we wanted to do was give everyone tonight a copy of the market analysis and kind of point out a few of the quick key sections that we wanted you to look at. So when we do give that presentation, you have a little bit more of the meat of the background and we can have a little bit more of a conversation about the implementation of the market analysis and what the results of that really mean. So there's a very brief cover memo on that market analysis. Again, this was an effort to, that the town undertook, not under any state or federal mandate, but something that we wanted to look at to say, what are the needs of Groton? Everybody can say, hey, we want a Whole Foods, or we want a Trader Joe's, but if the market is not asking for that, that's not what we're going to get. So when we start doing our planning, our economic development outreach and all of our plans, we know what is the market and what are the needs in Groton. If you look at that market analysis and for others not at the meeting tonight, it is on the town's webpage, on the Planning and Development website. The first, really, 39 pages of that document are key and they're broken into two sections. The first pages, 1 through 19, the executive summary, that really gets into the meat of the findings, what are the needs in Groton. And then pages 20 through 39, really get into the implementation and the action steps. So how are we going to make these things happen in the future? What I'd ask for the council to look at and think about as we move forward on this and over the course of the next couple of weeks, you know, your little bit of homework that we wanted to give you was, think about when you're reading this, what are some of our challenges, our opportunities that we have within Groton? And what are your thoughts on these recommendations? Think about, you know, the Route 1 corridor, some of our industrial land in town. What can we do moving forward to help make Groton a better place, to help grow that grand list and get more business in town? Some of these action items in there, you gave us funding in this current fiscal year to implement some of these. So we've already budgeted for some of these. And this action steps implementation matrix, it's not just this year, it's going to be many years. So those are the things, when you look at these, again, first 39 pages, 1 through 19, more the executive summary, 20 through 39 are the action steps. And it's, this doesn't read like your typical planning document. Not that planning documents aren't cool and fun, but this is, I think, really interesting from an economic development standpoint. What do we need to do? Happy to answer any questions on any of that. Otherwise, we want to keep you waiting for this presentation on the 26th, so.
Anybody have any questions right now?
I'm sure I will after I read it.
Okay.
I just want to make a comment. That was a great article the other day in the paper about all the new businesses going downtown Mystic. It's a direct reflection, I think, of the good work you guys are doing.
Thanks.
Streamlining those applications.
Trying to, one step at a time.
Yeah, Paige.
Just in terms of format, as John mentioned, the executive summary is actually a great executive summary that'll really highlight the key points. And we pulled out a few that you'll see in the bullets. And you may have heard of a few of them all along. But I think we not only wanted to know some of the challenges within Groton, but some of the opportunities. So you'll find often within that executive summary, they'll provide kind of an offset. They'll show, here's a challenge, but with it, they'll also provide you the opportunity. So what do you do about it? How do you take it to that next level? And they also tried to incorporate that in some of the action steps, which are at the tail end of that executive summary. So I would encourage you to kind of look at that, compare and contrast, you know, two sides of a coin, so to speak, where there's an issue. Sometimes there really is something that would provide us a good future in Groton.
Thank you, Paige. Well, we have some homework, I guess, to read. Thank you very much. Are you guys staying for the sale or lease of town-owned excess property?
The next two.
Want to just jump?
The next two.
Mystic Education Brownfield grant them as well?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll just keep selling. Next on is 2016-0183, the Mystic Education Center Brownfield Grant.
I'm going to handle that one. You have a referral memo before you're dealing with this. The reuse of properties within Groton, of public properties, that would include both municipal and state, is actually a great economic development driver. I know the town is very interested in growing their grand list. And that is one of the ways that we can do it. And focus on some of these key properties such as the Mystic Oral School. Both the town and the state realize that. They don't want properties sitting there idle that aren't generating any revenue at all. So this particular parcel has been an interest of ours for a number of years, as you well know. But also the state wants to do something with it. It's a large piece of property, well over 55 acres, actually several parcels in that area. There are about 150,000 square feet of buildings on the property. If you noticed, over, I believe, winter time, they were demolishing some of the buildings that were really too far gone, that added no real value to the property. We've had some conversations with DECD over the past few months regarding the property. They were aware that we had coordinated a feasibility analysis for the property that was done as a part of our market analysis and regulatory audit product. And it provided a number of potential scenarios for the redevelopment of the property. Some of those included housing for an aging population, high-end residential hospitality slash recreation, institutional, mixed use, or municipal use. We realized that municipal use is not likely, but that was an option. And I think DECD was impressed that we took the initiative to move forward with this particular study. And they wanted to know how we could forge a partnership. We had some very casual conversations and described what maybe we could offer to them. We believe that we know the community better than they and that we have experience in marketing and promoting properties. And that caught their attention. And they said, well, maybe we could get you some funding if you're willing to assist us. As I said, it's in their best interest as well as ours. So the conversations continued for a while. And they do have a program. As you can see in the memo, it's called Connecticut State-Owned and formerly State-Owned Brownfields Program. It's used to fund remediation, abatement, and demolition activities for Brownfield site redevelopment, with other goals including increasing the economic impact of the investment and reactivating long-stalled sites and encouraging job creation. That led them to believe that they could grant us $50,000 to help them with the marketing and promotion. John and I have done this in other communities successfully. And we actually have somewhat of a formula that we will describe in more detail, actually in the next item. But they were intrigued by this process. And they did request that we submit some documentation fairly quickly, which we did. We only had roughly a week or a week and a half to do it. And based on that, they submitted paperwork back to us. We're coming to you explaining the program, but also hoping to get your endorsement so that we can move forward with the particular grant offering. Just to touch on some of the items that we would work with the state on, this is not all-inclusive, but one of the key items is actually getting some signage on the property. We've already had interested parties come to us over the past few months, people that we've known, people that are in the area. And I think signage actually would formalize that the property is up for redevelopment. We've had some people come and go, wondering what's going on. And if you put the signs up and we have an agreement with DECD, I think that gives a little bit more confidence and credibility to the redevelopment project. We would develop real estate summary sheets. They're basically information sheets, often one page, front and back, photos, snapshot descriptions, zoning, probably a brief description over the feasibility analysis, some options on the site. Those sheets would be used to distribute all through New England to prospective developers who would be interested in the property. And they would make a quick determination from what they see as to whether or not they'd be interested. In essence, we start the marketing with those sheets. We don't start the marketing with an RFP, but we start the marketing with information and we begin forging relationships with prospective architects and developers. We would use the sheets to do a lot of outreach through email to private development teams. We'd also do a lot of advertisements in the New England area, particularly the New England Real Estate Journal. We would start to show the property to prospective buyers. We've driven through the property already with some interested parties, but we would be given access to the building so people could walk through and really get a sense for what the opportunity is. Obviously, we're interested in engaging the public. We want to know what their input is on some prospective development ideas. A little bit different than opening it up and saying, what do you guys want to see? The way we would stage it is we would indicate, here are some options that were developed in the feasibility analysis. We'd like to know your thoughts. Do you like the idea of senior housing versus maybe hospitality slash recreation? Start to get some of that feedback. People might talk about buffering, noise, road access, et cetera. There may be some other studies that we have to complete. One of the ideas was a limited access road from the property down to River Road and possibly pedestrian connections up the hillside. And maybe a little bit of selective clearing of some trees so we could increase the water view. We might do some studies on that front. Ultimately, we would develop and work with DECD to issue a release and RFP. And it's that RFP that development teams would respond to. But not until we actually get enough interest from particular developers. They also want us to be involved in working on some regulatory amendments for the property in order for it to be redeveloped. We've agreed to participate in that. And then lastly, our role would be to help them in selecting a preferred developer, a team and a particular use. So again, they're offering us $50,000 to assist us. It's a large piece of property. We believe it's significant. We've actually had more interest in it than we originally thought we would have. And if we're able to move this forward towards redevelopment, it would actually contribute significantly to our tax base. So that piques our interest. Obviously, the state is expending a lot of money on an annual basis for electricity, heating. They want to relinquish that cost. So it's kind of a win-win for both of us.
Great. Any questions? Joe? And then Diane?
There was a movement last year to try to, the DEP to kind of connect all that land together. And it didn't seem like it worked out near the end. But is there any movement on that? Because right now, it's still broken up in a few pieces, isn't it? It's not, not considered one piece of property currently?
It actually is still considered one piece of property. It's DEP and DECD both are stewards of different sections of the property. So we've contacted DECD and DEEP to talk about working together moving forward so that some of those other pieces of property, we don't necessarily need to see them developed. But as Paige mentioned, looking at a feasibility analysis of, there may be the need for a limited access roadway down to River Road, or somewhat, some selective tree cutting or a pedestrian path because to, let's see, the north of the property, there's also some town-owned open space. So maybe connecting those up to create more amenities on the site so when it actually is used for reuse, it'd have an even higher value and more benefit. So I think all the right people are working on the same sheet of music at this point in time, just there hasn't been a commitment yet.
And the folks that are contacting you are contacting you because you have it on the site somewhere? Or are they just approaching you because they heard that the property may be available? Or where's the buzz coming from? Or just anywhere?
Believe it or not, a lot of the people we deal with are people we've worked with in the past that we maintain contact with. Also, they may come in interested in a different project. And we're always doing our best to try to pitch Groton. They might be interested in one area, we say, by the way, while you're here, we want to make you aware that we've got this other project going on in the future. Do you know anybody who might be interested? And sometimes they're interested, sometimes they refer others to us.
Great. Diane?
I love that we're moving forward on this. I think this is great for us. I do have a two-part question. What do you think out of all these scenarios would give us the most bang for our buck? In other words, if we pick the aging, the housing for aging population, it's not going to put kids in the school as opposed to a residential area. So do you think there's one more valuable than the other? And my second part is, are we going to have a say? In other words, are we just going to put it out there with all these scenarios? Or we're going to say, look, I do not want another municipality. I would prefer having the aging population resident.
I think that it's difficult at this point to evaluate which of these alternatives will be best. It was kind of a first-cut analysis. And without knowing the details, we won't really know what the best benefit is to Groton. These are more general land use possibilities. Without getting into specifics on what the offering is, what the fiscal impact analysis is for each one, we're not going to know the best benefit for Groton. On the housing, though, you also mentioned aging versus-
Residential.
High-end. Keep in mind that housing now for millennials, which is in high demand, they're not having the children that maybe older generations had. And especially with EB's growth, I guess I'll throw out that statistic. We learned something a couple of weeks ago, it was pretty interesting. EB has 14,000 jobs today, split between Connecticut and Rhode Island. They're going to add roughly 4,000. That brings it to 18,000. They anticipate over the next five-plus years, through attrition and retirement, they will hire 14,000 people. So that, you're going to see an influx, and that's between Rhode Island and Connecticut again, so let's, let's cut it in half. Let's say it's 7,000 people. They're going to be younger millennials. We have to know what their consumer demands are, housing, shopping, dining, recreating. And they're not looking for that large single-family home. And they're looking to start their families later. They're very career and community-oriented. So even if it wasn't senior housing, if it was other high-end housing, they're probably going to have a small footprint, a floor plate for each apartment or condo. You probably will not have that many children in that type of development. I think it's unlikely.
And when it comes to a municipal use, it was a suggestion in this land use study that here are all the possibilities. And when they were saying a municipal use, they were suggesting that, well, maybe there's something the town could use it for. Our main priority right now is getting this property on the tax roll and seeing it develop into something that's going to generate taxes for the town. So right now, it's giving $0 to the town. We want to see the development that's the best suited for the area, that's best suited for the town, and that's going to give us maximum value. You have to look at the context of what's appropriate for the area. I imagine it's going to be some type of a residential or hospitality use that ends up there. But again, we're going to market the property, we're going to get some interest. And we have to see what interested developers want to do. And then we can analyze those proposals with the state. And the property is within the town, so I think we'll have some say in what happens there.
So when you market it, you're going to put all these scenarios down when you market it?
We have not gotten to that point yet. What we commonly would have done in the past is list some preferred alternatives.
Users, okay.
We've not yet, this is just the study that came out, and we're probably not going to put down municipal.
Thank you.
And no private developer is going to buy it for a municipal use anyway. But I think we're going to have to refine our thinking a little bit and put that in our fact sheet or our property listing as to some ideas that we're comfortable with. Because ultimately, we're all going to have to make a decision on what we think the future zoning is going to be. So our intended use has to match that zoning.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
So when you, we're talking about signs and marketing, where are you planning on putting those? Do you have an idea?
We haven't pinpointed a location. We'll probably have a couple of signs on the property itself, on the high ground. I don't know if we would put one at the base at River Road.
I think that would be a great idea.
You think it's a good idea?
Yeah. There's tons and tons of people going by River Road. If we could use the town property to do that. But you'd have to say something like, it's not this property, but it's adjacent to this or something like that.
Yeah.
Don't we get more traffic on Cow Hill?
You get them on both. I think you should put it, but you might be able to put a high sign and so it's visible from 95.
Whatever we do for marketing signage, we'll kind of look at the property, see what some of our traffic counts are on our roads, and obviously make sure we're putting a sign up that's in accordance with our sign regulations too, so.
Thank you. Dean, Karen?
If you do put one off River Road, it should be big enough so you can see it from the river. Maybe even across the river. But a sign in front of the property, because you've got to go down Oral School Road to get to the property, so the, you'd have, if you were thinking, put a property in front of the sign, were you talking about literally the property itself or something at the head of where Oral School meets?
On the property.
On the property itself. See, unless somebody goes down that road, nobody would see it. You'd actually have to say, basically, on Cow Hill, by the way, there's property down here in case you guys are interested.
In addition to having the signage, there's going, we're going to be putting ads in the New England Real Estate Journal and other publications to get the word out. I mean, the sign out in front attracts people that are driving by.
Yeah.
But it's also all the other, but it's also an identifier, oh, here's the property, I've got there. Wait, you know, it's-
Yeah, it's not the primary driver of interest. I know. For something like that, it isn't, yeah.
Karen?
I just wanted to confirm now, we're getting a grant, if we accept the grant from the state, will we still be in the driver's seat on this? Or will the state, you know, we're going to be doing this marketing and everything, who's calling the shots? What I want to make sure is that we're doing what's in the best interest of the town, not what's in the state's best interest. Because I know their collaboration with some other municipalities hasn't always worked out to the benefit of the municipality. So are we going to be in the driver's seat?
Well, I kind of look at it like a spectrum. They could go forward on their own right now and attract any developer that they care to. In entering this partnership, we gain more control.
Okay.
And they know also that at the end of the day, we're the ones that have to deal with the regulatory amendment and the review of the plans. So I view the partnership, they're granting a little bit more authority to us. At the end of the day, it is a state asset, though. It's their property. I believe they're going to make the final judgment. But they're looking for us to do much of the legwork, which I think further allows us to protect Groton and to get the development that we desire. I think it puts us in a stronger position.
Because right now, we have very little input and the state has a lot of excess properties, just like this. So it, not that this isn't a priority to them, but it's not their highest priority. By us entering into this partnership, we are making this a priority so that we can get this on the grand list sooner and to get a use that's compatible with the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
No matter what, it still has to go through our planning and zoning process, so we must have some say in it, even a state-owned property. Once it changes hands, once it becomes, comes into private ownership, then yes.
Yep. Yep.
I was going to make a motion to endorse this supplemental, the grant application for Mystic Oral School, Brownfields grant valued at $50,000.
All righty then.
We have a motion in several seconds. Harry?
I just want to make sure that this is clear in my mind. This is kind of, I've toured this property. I mean, my kids play ball on the field, it stopped in 2011. I know the property very well. But I just want to get this clear. Across the street, there was a fire department interest in making that up, some kind of, remember that, Mark? Where training or something across, because it was an old house over there, whatever. Is that part of this property too? Do you know?
I believe it is.
It looks that way to me. I mean-
It says in there that-
My understanding is that the fire department has a lease-
Okay.
Kind of year-to-year. They have made many efforts over the years to try to acquire that piece.
Yeah, they had a handout when we took the tour of the property, I remember.
Correct, yeah. But I believe it was part of, it's integral to the 55 acres or whatever's left.
That's why I'm asking a question, because I believe it is too. I mean, it's, you know, it's, the road go right in between that and-
I mean, there may be a place for that, once you know what they want to do, once you know how you want to develop the rest of the property. But I would hate, personally, I would hate to see that sectioned off, just like the DEP pieces were in terms of stewardship, without having an overall plan. So as far as-
It may or may, it wouldn't fit with some of these proposals that might happen. You know, why would you want to put housing and firemen across the street, you know, doing what they're doing? But, and is it a done deal? The open space stuff has been split off? That's a-
No, so right now, it's still all one parcel.
Okay.
It's held in separate types of stewardship. So DECD controls the land, where the buildings are, some of the surrounding land.
Yeah, and I heard you say that. And then the DEEP has the other part, is that-
Correct. So-
What's the approximate numbers of those two parcels? Is it like 50, 70 or? Because I got, in my mind, I have like maybe 30 or 40 percent of it's left and the rest of the open space is kind of been split off. But that's just what I think, you know?
I don't know the exact figures. I want to say it's somewhere around those percentages.
Okay. That's good, I just-
But again, we're looking to work with DEEP and DECD to look at some of those areas that were set aside as potential open space and can we have trails through there?
That's too bad we're working with two departments, but that's my thought, so. I'm in favor of doing what we're doing, so, thanks.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero and brings us to 2016-0184, sale or lease of town-owned excess property, which I think you were going to get everybody up to snuff on what's going on, your plan for that, correct? Like the details of-
I'm going to tackle this one at first as well. And some of this language is similar to what we just heard in this last item, but obviously that was specific to one parcel. We're initiating a larger project dealing with numerous excess properties that the town owns. town owns. And similar to Mystic Oral School, we envision that this is a real opportunity to grow the grand list, and that's been a priority for the town for a while. You know, we've talked, you know, we have an old economy motto, where people think we're going to attract another big, large employer. Market analysis has hopefully educated us on that, that that's unlikely. We're going to be looking at small to medium-sized business growth. But another opportunity for us to grow the grand list are properties that we already have in our ownership, and those should not be overlooked. However, we're going to talk about a process that's a little bit different than what we did in the past. Land...municipal land assets should not be treated the same way as a used police cruiser. You don't simply pass it on and throw a quick bid on the street, or an RFP, and wonder, well, what happened? How come we didn't get the hits, the interest that we needed? I think we read an article with Salem Mast, they did a whole story on it. What's going wrong? How come we're not getting the interest when they throw an RFP in the street for 30 days and nothing happens? Well, the reason is that they're not marketing the property. They're simply using a purchasing instrument to try to gain magically some quick interest. It doesn't work that way. So, we think it's important to view these properties more as redevelopment projects rather than real estate transactions. Real estate transactions happen all the time. I've had real estate brokers ask me, "Why don't you just put it on MLS?" Because these are special projects, and what we can do is actually do a better job in creating kind of a feeding frenzy of sorts with these properties. We can help guide them through the regulatory process. And it's also important to realize, these properties are in...some of them are in some key locations that actually could be catalysts for your economic development. These growth areas that you really, really want to promote, you're in the driver's seat to really entice the right team and the right uses to come to the table and make these things happen. So, to only look at them as grand list attributes is probably lesser than the way that we should look at it. We should look at it from a bigger picture standpoint about business, economic development, jobs, how do we revitalize a particular neighborhood? Those are the ways that I think will benefit us long-term. So, as I mentioned, the straight RFP process doesn't necessarily leverage your best uses, nor the best financial yield to the town. And note, we're talking about not only sale, but also leasing of properties. That won't be common, but I want to mention that that is a possibility. That is something that has been done in other municipalities. I have done it, and it's worked out exceptionally well. I'll give you one example. We may never encounter it here in Groton, but when I worked for the city of Newport, we did acquire a piece of property from DOT, and we eventually enticed a small brewery to attract, to come to the property. And it's Newport Storm Beer and Thomas Two Rum. Small parcel, acre and a half. After 12 years of lease payments, it paid for the property. It's a 100-year lease. So, you basically have a triple net, meaning they pay you a monthly lease payment, also they'll pay your liability insurance, and they also pay taxes. And so, basically, after year 12, it paid for the initial investment. Your rate of return was fairly high. You have 88 years left on the lease, which is basically secondary revenue to the municipality. So, I just throw that out. As we deal with properties moving forward, that is an option. It's not one that is commonly used, but it is an option, and we should not always look at the simple sale of property. You might actually find that you get a better financial offering with the lease option. So, within the actual memo that was provided, we provided a listing of particular options that are very similar to what we described with Mystic Education Center. We would propose to use signage at our key properties. Before we start putting signage up, though, we do have to identify what our key parcels are for redevelopment. We have a long listing of municipal parcels at this point in time, and we're in the process of prioritizing the ones that we think have the best shot for ease of redevelopment, financial yield to the town. Those that are in key growth areas for us, take, for example, Route 1, Route 12, those will actually come to the top. And also, the ones that are kind of ready to go. We've heard, for example, that Groton Heights is one that people are eager to see happen. It's an existing building, it's not undeveloped land. It's in a great location. That is one that we definitely need to push forward, and will be at the top of our list. So, we'll put signs on those key properties, as we discussed before. We'll also create a marketing brochure that we described. I don't think I mentioned, with Mystic Education Center, there was a copy, I believe, in your packet, of the actual brochure. This one happened to be for Wickford Elementary, which is in North Kingston, Rhode Island. We develop one of those for each one of our parcels. We'll conduct public meetings regarding various scenarios and try to gain people's input. We'll show the property. Now, one key point that's important to realize is that how long one markets the property directly translates to how many quality proposals you will receive in the future. As I said, if we put an RFP in the street for 30 days, we're going to get very little. We would actually suggest that we do a marketing for each parcel for about six months. And that involves several steps. That six months does involve the signage, the brochure we mentioned, the advertisements, the showing of the properties, the emails to various teams. We do have a spreadsheet that we've held for the past few years. We probably have 50 developers that we would send materials to. And if they're not interested, they're going to tell their friends and other investors that they know about. So, word travels fast. So, we want to take advantage of a multi-month period of time where we're marketing these properties. And it's kind of a...it's kind of a magic moment after you get through this. You don't get too many more phone calls, and people know it's on the street. And when they contact you, they start asking, "When is that RFP coming out? When's it going to come out? I'm ready to go." They've already got their architects on board. They may have even lined up some builders. They have the financial investors involved. At that point, that's when we know is the right time to issue the RFP. And we would typically issue it for 45 to 60 days, but they already know what's going to be in it, because we might tell them ahead of time, expect this is the type of material that we'll be asking for you. So, once we get to that point, it does move fairly quickly. But the marketing over several months is the key part.
And I know folks are anxious to see some of these properties moved, because they've been vacant or underutilized for a lot of years. But the last thing we want to do is, when we're so close to the goal line here, we don't want to rush it and fumble the ball. So, if we take very deliberate, clear steps at this point, that's what's going to make it, not only just adding it to the grand list, getting good revenue, but getting that great use at the end. So, that's really one of the key points we're going to focus on.
Like I said, about a 45 to 60-day turnaround, once the RFP gets out. And again, we will promote that RFP issuance more than just our website or local advertising. We'll put it on the street. We'll use an evaluation process with criteria. The criteria would be established and put in the RFP, and we'll share that information with the council when we're reviewing these proposals. Eventually, we will make a recommendation as to which of these proposals we think is best. There will be some interviews with the best teams and their uses. You select one as a preferred developer, and there's somewhat of a negotiation that takes place, possibly on use, or maybe you would like more intensity, maybe you would like less intensity, maybe you think their financial offering should be better, maybe you think that they should do it in two years rather than the proposed three years. So, anything that they propose is up for discussion and negotiation, and then ultimately, as you've done in the past, it comes back to you in a regular meeting for an official endorsement, and we enter the real estate transaction phase, either purchase and sale, or if it happened to be, a lease agreement. So, that pretty much provides the process in a nutshell. We think it's a better process than simply throwing an RFP on the street quickly. We think it'll yield better results in quality and also financial benefit to the town, and we think that we have the ability to really contribute to the grand list over time.
And in this year's budget through the CIP, the council and the RTM did allocate some funding, $15,000, for us to begin this process with some of the properties. Again, as Paige said, we're going through those properties now, trying to create a priority list, because we can't say, "All right, we're going to do these six properties all at once, because each one takes a lot of time. We can start getting signs in the ground, but we're going to focus on, you know, the top two, three priorities first, roll those out, and then, as those are hitting certain stages, we can start getting into some of the next properties." So, it's going to take a little bit of time, but we think this is the best approach to go.
Dean?
A couple of questions. One, I think we've all heard the phrase, reuse committee. It's been done sometimes. Somewhere in here, I think there was, as part of the procedure, there's a soliciting input from the community. It's not just what the town fathers and mothers think is best. I think it's only fair if you've got neighbors to ask them what they would like. I think it's just being neighborly. The larger question I have, though, is this. So, the town owns property, and the town's going to be marketing property, however it does it, with just a straight old RFPs or a procedure like this one. So, let's say we become more professional about this thing, and we want to leverage and maximize. What about the owner of a piece of property, private owner of a piece of property, that's also would like to sell their five acres, or 10 acres, and would like to see some development on it? Are we not also...are we not in competition with that private owner? Before, when we were basically just trying to get rid of the property, and we can get rid of it by getting rid of it for a buck, I guess, you can always get rid of the property. We don't feel like we're in competition with anybody else. But once we engage in this process of, you know, how do we maximize, et cetera, would it be better to say, "Okay, we own some key parcels here, maybe somebody else also owns some key parcels, not the town, but somebody else. As far as the town's concerned, yeah, we'd like to get rid of property, but I'd like to see the key parcel, or the key top, the top three or the top five, whether they're something we own or something they own, and make that happen." Bottom line, if we own something that's really important and we market it, somebody buys that, what about the property across the street that could also have been viable, just have to be privately owned? Have we...are we competing with private developers? Is there a way to coordinate for the greater good?
I think, one, there are some properties we'll be looking at which might make sense to merge, or to be purchased by a budding property owners to have a larger development. In other instances, the market's the market. So, if someone today is selling a piece of property, maybe they're asking too much money for it. Maybe they're being unreasonable in what they're looking for. I can't tell you how many times in my career, and I'm sure this has happened with Paige, we've had people come in looking for great properties, and they want to buy X piece of property, the appraisal says it's worth X, and the family that owns that property says, "No, it's not worth X. We think Walmart's going to come here and buy it for 5X, and we're holding out for that." Well, then, we need to move forward. If we have excess properties like Groton Heights, like there's a piece of commercial real estate behind Gabriel's that was at one point in time approved for an office building, there are other commercial pieces of property that the town has retained ownership over due to tax sales, foreclosures, or other things. Today, they're not collecting any taxes for us. We need to sell those, we need to see them built upon for the best uses for the site. One of the problems I think we've seen, and this is in the market analysis, is we're not seeing a lot of the new investment. So, along our Route 1 corridor, no one has done the complete redevelopment option and, you know, built the multi-story buildings and totally revamped their plaza. Well, we need to help market some of our properties that we have now that might start to show some of that interest and make that happen. So, we can either sit around and wait for everybody else to sell their property, which hasn't been working so far, or we can get in the driver's seat, and that's what we're proposing to do here.
Do you think you have a situation where, and you've probably done the inventories, for me to buy, I'm interested in the area, I'm interested in the location, I'm interested in doing something, and that's why I'm interested in your five acres, or your whatever it is. But you know, your five acres come with strings. You've got an RFP, I've got to meet your conditions, you've got to like my lender. The family over here that owns five acres isn't imposing any conditions, they're just looking for price, and you know what? Maybe their price is okay. But I get this one, or maybe I'll pay extra, but I get, I don't have to go through your hoops. I'll do whatever I want over here. Do you envision any scenario like that? Well, now, they're really competing with us. It's sort of unfair, so to speak, the other way, where they have a leg up because they're not putting any strings on anything.
I think competition's a great thing.
Yeah.
Greg?
How are you going to make this prioritize list? Are we going to get a vote, or do you guys develop that on your own? And when do you see that happening and getting this whole process started?
The priorities?
Yeah.
I think that we would be interested in the properties and how we prioritize them.
Yeah, you talked about, you know, we have a lot, we're going to get a prioritize list, attack one or two at the top. When's that going to happen? How's it going to happen?
Well, we're actually beginning that process now. We're getting data from the finance department of a lot of properties. At the same time, we're developing criteria for trying to create more of a shortlist. I think it's not going to necessarily be an overly scientific method. I think it's going to involve what we know you desire, Groton Heights. We all know that's a top one that people want to focus on. It's also going to involve maybe what we can find out regarding size of property. As I mentioned, if it's an area that we think will pique people's interest, that'll probably rise to the top as well. Or if it's something that's going to take forever, it's got a lot of constraints, that might fall more to the bottom. So, I think we're going to develop this listing internal. Where it goes from there, I'm not sure.
I mean, we'd be happy to take that to the council, because we need your buy-in in this. I mean, at the end of the day, you're going to be the one saying, "Yes, we want to sell X property to X preferred developer." So, once we create this priority, top five, you know, eight list of properties, and say, "Eric, these are the three we think we can work on over the next, you know, six months to one year," we'd be happy to bring that to you to get your buy-in, so that you're supporting what it is we're doing.
Bonnie?
Maybe you could put together the list of the top ones. I think there's...we own a lot of properties, so I don't know if you're going to put them all on there, but the ones that you're first looking at, and send them to all of us, and let us do like we did with the charter revision, and just rank them. You could summarize unofficially what we think.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that list is going to be driven by people interested in property anyhow. I think you're going to get people who are looking at Mystic River and thinking, "Wow, that's a great opportunity," as well as the Fort Griswold property. I'm excited, because I think this is...and I am the guy that kept saying, "Throw a sign on it, throw a sign on it," because after seven or eight years, it's like, "Okay, let's do something." And I do like the approach you're taking. I think that you should create some kind of buzz about the property. I'm excited about it. I could actually kind of maybe sell schools on it now, because I think people want to see that movement, and they want to see the ability to get rid of schools. And I think that's a difficult thing to do when a town owns a property. But when someone comes up and you market it, right, and they offer, they come up with a good plan, I think we're going to be able to easily say, "I think this council will..." speaking for myself, but I think we'd all say, "Go ahead and sell it if someone came up and said there was a good plan, like maybe condos at the east end." But that's going to all be driven by the market. I think that list is going to get in order quickly for you guys by the phone calls you receive, so.
And as I mentioned earlier, we need...well, I didn't mention this, but we need to do a better job putting Groton on the map. Yes, we're the submarine capital of the world, we have Pfizer, we have EB. To some degree, even the market analysis stated, we need more exposure. When we met... When we met with the future developer at the Sealy School, that has led to some other things. Maybe by luck, or, or maybe just opportunity. We were at the same time meeting with the Wyndham Hotel Group, who has, of course, all kinds of low, medium, high-end brands, and both of them have been talking as well, and we're looking at other properties in the area, and then they have friends, they have investors, and it tends to create more and more interest. And while they're here, we tell them about things like Mystic Education Center, and it just starts to snowball. And I think we're starting to put Groton on the map, and the more projects we do, even municipal projects, it just gets more exposure, and it benefits the community.
Greg?
Yeah, I wasn't asking to bring it to the council. I think you guys probably have the most expertise to decide what's the best interest, you know, what properties have the most potential. I was just concerned that, you know, we get that list figured out and start moving forward.
I did, I, a couple of things. I applaud the effort. I've seen this brochure before, I think seven or eight months ago, and so you're giving, I understand there's counselors here who haven't seen the presentation, but what's happened in the eight months? I'm sure there's been some movement, it sounds like there has been, but to me, you know, I, I always worry, well, I, I think, my perception is that things move slowly. And so, I, I'm, a couple of things I'm wondering. One of my guilty pleasures is million-dollar listing on some TV network. And what you guys were saying was what those guys do, what Bonnie does, right? You market properties. You're, you have, you wanna get your, you wanna get it out there, you want to, but you're not marketers, right? Your, your job in the town is not a marketer. So why wouldn't you contract out to people who do this? And it costs us nothing, and they only get paid if it sells, and you can do other things that you need, you know, you're kinda connecting with them, but you're, you're doing other things while they're doing the, the heavy work, and maybe they move quicker, because they don't have a whole municipality to deal with. So that's, that's, can you, well, that's one of my questions.
So, actually, I think part of Paige's job actually is marketing, so, not, not to be cute, but the other difference is that I respect realtors, I think they do a good job in what they do. We're not looking to just sell the property, we're looking to figure out what is the best use for the property. So, I mean, a, a lot of times, I think a realtor is looking to sell the property, and we've sold some town properties, they've gotten approval for things, and there's not a shovel in the ground yet. So some of those strings that you were bringing up, I think some of those strings are important, because if we sell a piece of property, getting it on the grand list, yeah, that's important. But if it's on the grand list for $200,000, it's something. But if it sits there vacant, and is only collecting minimal taxes over time, as opposed to going through this more in-depth process, putting reverter clauses in there that, if you're not gonna meet these milestones within X amount of time, we get the property back, because we have a whole slew of development teams that want to redevelop this property into something that's gonna help create that sense of place. So a theme you're gonna see in that market analysis is Groton needs a sense of place. We're looking to not just sell the property, but to see it redeveloped into something that's gonna make Groton a better place.
I mean, it makes sense, but are you telling me that there's, there's, there's only sellers, you know, who just sell? They don't do what you're suggesting you can do? Like, if, I mean, can't you get help doing that, and, and tell the, the realtor, or whoever the business is, because it might not be a realtor, you know, to say, we don't want to just sell it? We want you, I mean, you know, not consultant, but, you know, there's, there's gotta, I mean, there's gotta be some, there's gotta be somebody who has this business idea that they can help municipalities not just sell the building, but really develop, do what you're talking about. And, and I'm not, before you, I'm not trying to take away your job, I'm just, you were here eight months ago with the same brochure, and we, again, my perception is that it's eight months, and you're right, we're hot on Groton Heights, but it, it's so structured that you want to get a, a, you know what I'm saying? Like, it just, you wanna make things happen, not...
Not just keep talking about it.
It just, it just is brutal. Go ahead.
I actually have several answers, I'm gonna try to condense it.
Alright.
One thing that you actually mentioned that I totally agree with. I've been in this business for 25 years, and development is probably the most interesting part of what I do. And someday, when I exit government, I will do exactly that, and that's consulting for these types of projects, because, no disrespect, I've worked with some great realtors, but I've seen many who don't perform as well. And I think there is a need for that intermediary. And there's a huge difference between a real estate transaction, which is broker-driven, and commission-driven, quick, and the real estate development project. And that's the best way I can actually kinda describe it, because we're invested in seeing the project occur. I've seen plenty of properties that have been purchased, and nothing happens with them. Will you get a couple pennies on your grand list? Sure. If you wanted to do a quick sale, you could, but you're not gonna get a development project. It requires a lot of negotiation, it takes buy-in from the council, you have to know what it is you desire, like we're discussing with Mystic Oral School. Someone will buy that, probably sit on it for 20 years. You want a development there, you want activity, you want something that's really gonna contribute to your community. The other benefit that we have is, we handle the regulatory end of it. So as we're dealing with prospective developers, we can try to answer their questions along the way, whereas someone who's working for commission, they're just looking for that money, and once they close, they're, they're out of the picture. I think we have a larger vested interest at play than simply having property tran, trade hands. So I, I think it's a different process. Clearly, ours takes a little bit more time, but I do believe, as John said, my, my job is marketing. My job is promotion, and it's not just a one-off, it's not just a quick sale. If it is, you're not going to attain the goals that you truly desire.
So from, from a timeframe perspective, when do you think we can see the first brochures, and have, and have things starting to go? When do you anticipate that you're...
I think a brochure like that, once we identi, let's pick Groton Heights, because I think that's one that arrives to the top. We get a brochure like that in, in, in a month, two months tops, given that it's summertime. But I have a staff person, my community development planner, who will be working on that, as well as Lauren, our part-time clerk, who have the capabilities to develop the language, and also make it look like it needs to be. So I'm guessing one to two months for that particular property. Doesn't take that long. Getting a sign in the ground, same period of time. Our largest challenge right now was getting some of the funding to support our efforts, which thankfully, we received 15,000, but also, we've got the money coming in from the state, because it does take some money to do these things. You, you have to spend a little to get a lot. So that was our first hurdle. Second hurdle is, we gotta prioritize the properties, because there's a long list right now. And I think if we knew, these are the top three priorities, then we could really zone in and target on those. So that, that is an internal challenge that we have to work through at the moment. But once we have a property that we know we're gonna work on, it's six months max before we actually issue that RFP, and we also have development teams in the picture by that time. So it doesn't take that long, and actually, I would argue, sometimes that's quicker than hiring a commercial broker who's got gazillion properties. We're looking to reach out to all of New England, and sometimes the brokers are not doing that.
I would just ask, I'm, I'll let you go in a second when I'm done. I just, I'm wondering if we can get a, a timeline from you? If we could, in the next two weeks, have some kind of, something laid out that's gonna tell us, we're, you know, and we're not gonna hold you to every day, but like to get an idea of what we're looking at for timeframe. Bonnie?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, 'cause we're gonna see you in two weeks for the presentation, maybe you could have some of your top priorities at that time.
Well, one of the challenges, as Paige said, we have a few properties right now, but we've just been trying to get a list from finance, and they've been dealing with the budget. I certainly don't like to make excuses, this is a priority for us. For a number of months, we were, Paige only had one full-time staff person, because our economic development specialist had left. We were trying to wrap up the market analysis, which we're done with now, so there are some other priorities that we're juggling.
ADC.
The airport development zone, which will be submitted to the state sometime in the next couple of weeks, that's something that the town had been talking about for a number of years, so we're wrapping that up. So there are a lot of other priorities that we're juggling during the budget process. I remember, you know, Mayor, you had asked, well, is this all you need for funding? And I said, well, no, in an ideal world, I'd probably have another staff person to help with a lot of the economic development efforts we're doing, because knowing the time intensity on this. And to answer the other question, you know, Paige's future career of doing this type of work, often developers are the ones that are saying, let me find great property, let me take it through the approval process, and then I'm gonna sell it to the hotel, the residential developer, the apartment developer. I mean, we both know a lot of developers, and their job, they don't want to build anything. They just want to take it from raw land to what we're proposing to do, at least get it marketed for proposed uses, so.
Joe?
Yeah. Does it make sense at this point to, to take those properties and do the list, and have us go down as a council, and approve that we actually want to sell them? Because I think what happened when I first got on, there, there was already plans to, to like, say the Noank Garden, for, for instance, that was already kind of a done deal. So if you were on the council previously, you made this agreement, so now, we could, we could go away, the next council could be, say they want a garden at, at Eastern, at Groton Heights. Now, that's a possibility. But, but if, if we voted now to sell it as a council, and, and we put something in motion, a new council would have to stop that motion, and then, and then say, okay, now, we want it to be something different than for sale. Does it make sense that a council who's so on board right now, that we would kinda package this kind of stuff together, and say, okay, no, we do want to sell this, or we don't want to sell it? But to let it go, to let something go between two councils, or even three councils, sometimes priorities change, maybe, maybe EB hires extra people, and maybe times get a little bit better, and we start going away from development again, when, I think, you know, long-term, we have to develop all these properties. So does it, does that make sense to, because right now, you're gonna, right now, you don't even know if we want to sell it. I think you got the overwhelming feeling from these nine people that probably want to sell Groton Heights, just, but there could be a new council in a year and a half that says, man, we, we never wanted to sell that, our intention was to, to not, to not be anything, or to be a museum, or whatever. So does it make sense at this point, or is that put in the cart before the horse, or...
No, I, I think before we start marketing properties, we want to make sure that the ones we're marketing are ones that the town wants to sell. In some instances, I believe the council has voted to sell some of these properties, and those are on our list, what we're trying to do, and we say we're trying to look at all the town properties. There's a, a number of properties that the town has acquired over the years through tax sale, other types of foreclosures, some parcels that maybe we've bought from the state that we can lease out. We're trying to get a, a comprehensive list to say, what's on the table? What are the opportunities and options that we have? And then from there, what rises to the top? But, yes, I, I think we want your buy-in. We don't want to pick the top five properties, and then to have all of you say, no, those are our lowest five, we wanted this to be number one.
So is it, is this, sorry, maybe, but are there some property, you said some are slated for sale, and were voted on by, by a previous council, is that, is like, is Groton Heights one of them? Or do you know, is there a list, a list of 10, and are there two or three that's, that they've already been kind of voted on, and said that they want to be sold?
That's all part of the research that we need to do, is compiling that list, look at what actions have been done, what's the zoning, what's the size, location, buildings, et cetera. And then, that criteria that Paige was talking about before, we can look at that and say, Eric, well, here are 10 properties that we know, that council either has taken action in the past to sell this, or it's something that, we didn't buy it for open space, we're not looking to, you know, sell recreation land or open space land, it's other things outside of that.
Greg? And then Harry.
I'm kind of disagreeing, 'cause I don't, I want us to micromanage you. I would like to give you a little bit of freedom to figure out what the best thing is for the town, 'cause I certainly don't know, in my heart of hearts, if I would be able to pick the right top three. I don't know, that's where you guys come in. So, I mean, granted, yeah, I appreciate the fact that you could bring it for us, and say, yeah, you know, these are the top three, or these are the top five, but I don't want to get into a situation where, you know, the council is all of us saying, let's vote on this, because we want to force this through, you know, a bunch of other town councilers that aren't here. I would like to think, anybody who sits in our seats is gonna support any kind of economic development that comes through. That's why we choose to do what we do, with this is all volunteer work that we do here, and I don't see why these guys would make any bad choices that we couldn't support moving forward. And I don't want to put another step to slow this process down, because we have all come to a conclusion, things take a long time to move. And to put a whole nother step to say, okay, wait a minute, let's make sure that the town council's on board, and we get the right vote, and we get the right motion, and we move all of this forward, who knows? I could add a whole nother month on top of something. So I just want to make sure that we're not micromanaging what they're doing. Yes, keep us in the loop as far as what kind of list you want to put forward, and what kind of brochure you're gonna put out, but I, I want to be careful moving forward as to what we're really, you know, stamping or having to stamp to make things move forward. I just want to be careful with that.
Harry?
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna hit hurdles with all these, too. There's gonna be deed restrictions, there's gonna be zoning issues, I mean, then, the priorities are gonna have to be made, you know, one through five or whatever, but some are gonna be more difficult than others, because, I mean, you, you can't put a Burger King on a residential lot, you know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
And that's, that's what we're going through with Sealy, too, I, I think is part of the process. And that adds time to the whole thing. I would like to see the ones up at the top that are, that don't have the deed restrictions, or, or as many zone, or easier zoning issues. I mean, for instance, Groton Heights has got city zoning that we have to deal with. Noank School had Noank zoning that we had to deal with.
Yeah.
And the schools might have, you know, a deed restriction, saying it's gotta be an education facility, or recreational use, like we have across the street here, so, just, just comments, that's all.
Dean?
Yeah. I think the question, when we're talking about whether something ought to come before the council, or not, to speed up the process, we're, we're missing something, and that is this, they would be operating under the presumption that all this property is for sale, under some method, at some point. And I'm not saying that I have a property in mind, I really don't, but it is possible, just like, it's a possibility, I suppose, that the oral school could be, could be used municipally, even though we can't imagine why at this point. But it's always a possibility that a particular parcel might be more valuable. We may make the choice, that even though it could go on the tax rolls, that we have a very good public use in mind for it, and we would like to pass on that first. I'm not, not to bollocks up the works or anything like that, but otherwise, what happens is, they put together a list, the whole thing is, is the whole thing, the properties are marketed, one by one, hopefully, if all, all goes well, everything is disposed of, we might have missed an opportunity to hold back an acre for something that we think has a, because we do that all the time. The town already owns public property, they own this property, we have schools, and we have properties, frankly, that could be performing economically, but don't, they're called parks. We choose to keep those off the tax rolls, on purpose. So I'm just saying, there could be an opportunity there somewhere. I think that's why we should have a look, before something is sold.
And also, when we go through our list, one of the things that we want to look at are, do any of these pieces make sense for us to keep for parks, rack, or for other town purposes? So that's something that's in our equation also.
Okay.
And, and one other quick point, Mayor, I want to make, yes, we did make a very similar presentation to the last town council, and I know some time has gone by, but I'm very happy that we came back tonight, because we're getting some very good feedback from some similar council members, but a lot of new council members. So this is very beneficial to us. These are going to be very big decisions, that'll impact neighborhoods and communities, and we don't want to go... and we don't want to go into it haphazardly. We need your buy-in.
Paige, go ahead, Diane, and then Joe, if you have something quick.
Just real quick, I personally am happy that you guys are involved and nobody outside because I'm going to call you back in a couple of weeks and say, okay, how are we doing? What's gotten done? What signs have been hung up? Because it is going too slow, and I think you're feeling the frustrations that we're feeling that we would like you to get going on these properties. Thank you.
Paige, do you have something?
I'm certainly not an expert in Connecticut municipal law. I will say, one of the things I was familiar with in Rhode Island, clearly, we're having a conversation about the disposition of publicly owned property, and we're just talking about process tonight. But at some point, as you deal with one particular parcel and you move into more detailed discussions, you would not necessarily want the public to know every detail and facet. So I just throw that out there. I didn't mention it in my description, but as you move into more sensitive information, I don't know what they call it in Connecticut, but they would, I'm familiar with it being called an executive session, so it's a closed door meeting. And basically, you post disposition of publicly owned property, and we would talk about a strategy moving forward. So whatever's done, I imagine in the future, that type of meeting would be needed. Let's just say, we recommended that property number three be something we really, really go after. Why? Because we think it can make $10 million. I don't know that we want to start talking about numbers so that the public can hear it because that's going to influence your ultimate negotiating.
We, we had that history and it's exactly what happens. Joe, did you want to?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to say, as far as, that's, to my point, even what Harry was saying was, you know, we could have this list of property, and then the reason I want to vote first and get it out there and open, so, because we're going to have a bunch of neighbors for every single school, for their reason coming forth, why they don't want it to be this or that. That's just a natural progression of selling property in the town. So, and then, you know, some, some residents who want developments, some who don't. So all that can be vetted out ahead of time, like before you start, I mean, I mean, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, so, so this all could be happening. Say if right now, we said we voted tonight, and said, well, you know, in the next council meeting, we're going to say that we do want to sell Eastern Point. Well, there's going to be a lot of people that come into Eastern, from the Eastern Point area, or not Eastern Point, the Fort Griswold area, they're going to say, well, it should never be this, it should be a museum. That should be vetted kind of, and that's where we could do that ahead of time for free, I think. So I don't know if, I, I just think, put, putting it up for sale without, without us knowing if we want to sell it. I know what I want to do with most of the property, I can tell you in advance, but what the rest of town's going to want to do, I don't know.
Harry.
Yeah, we got something later on our agenda tonight talking about Groton Heights. And I, I for one am curious to wait, curious might want to wait because, I mean, the property might be more marketable one way than the other way. So I just just want to add out there, I don't know if you're aware of the fact that we're going to talk about a possible land swap in Groton Heights here a little bit later, so.
So wait, I'm going to inject that for information.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not. Not looking for any action tonight.
Okay. Well, I'd be interested to know which way's more valuable.
Deb.
On a closing note, I just know how hard it was for us to pick a submarine. Okay? I just don't want to get stuck in the conversation of them coming to us with nine and us having to say, oh, this is our favorite, because it was very apparent, we all liked a different submarine too. So that's the only thing that I'm saying. When it comes to this decision moving forward, I just don't want it to become like the submarine conversation in which one we were going to pick. I just don't want to see that happen with the properties. That's all that I'm saying.
All right.
But if, if we are going to go forward like we did with William Sealy's school, we do have to approve the sale of each building, right?
I'm kind of trying to stay quiet here. If there's going to be disagreement about what properties we want to sell or not sell and for what, it's better off that they can get that result upfront, not after you got a live fish on the end of the hook. And these guys have spent six months, nine months courting a developer and so forth, and then have it come out when that's not what we want. I don't believe the list is very long. There may be a lot of properties out there that aren't specifically for recreation or whatever, but in terms of significant properties that have some significant development potential, from my experience, and, and it's going to be a relatively small list. Or you're going to have very hard, you're going to have very strong feelings about selling off properties. I, I think the intent of this is, I mean, we've, I have to be careful how I say, I mean, first of all, we had a neighborhood group for Groton Heights. There's already a report, there's already a recommendation. We've talked and we keep beating this to death. We've held off moving that forward primarily for market conditions and because we also got a ground field grant that we're about ready to conclude, or the consultants about ready, that will make the property more marketable because it will identify issues and, and issues that a future developer needs to know about. The fact that we can hand them a document that talks about what's in the building, what remediation has been done, what needs to be done, I think that's adding value to the property ultimately. So I, I think in part, though, we're going down this process because one of the things we've heard loud and clear, and it keeps coming up, and I think there's a, I believe there's misinformation, but this constant, well, what are we going to do with these future schools? We've gotten rid of a lot of schools, but we keep beating ourselves up that we have all these schools, and I'm, I'm trying to think, I mean, there was a conscious decision made to hold on to No Ink. I, I don't know why we keep, whether or not everybody agreed or not, but that was the decision that ultimately was made. There was a neighborhood group task force involved. The only school we've, you know, and Colonel Ledgerd, you know, the city expressed interest, they more recently maybe expressed, maybe they don't want to go ahead with that, but I don't have any more information from the city on that. Eastern Point, we were able to have reused as a, as another school. We have a brand-new high school over there. And we've said, at least up until now, we want to hold on to Fish Middle. So, you know, we're really, we're talking about Groton Heights, and I think we're in a much better position now to market that properly, the environment. People want to see the building stay. They don't want to see it go away. They want to see the structure reused, and it is in a residential zone. There's been, at least conceptually, an idea of how to deal with the zoning to basically mirror what the town has done for the reuse of industrials and institutional uses. But in part, some of the comments that we received there, what are we going to, if, you know, if the school facility project is approved, what are we going to do with all these schools? And that may be part of the, the product, some of the properties that John and Paige are talking about. But that's four, five, six years, even, you know, if we're successful, and hopefully we are in November, by the time the new schools go built, which means these schools can be vacated, we're four, five-plus years down the road. So I, I think if, personally, I would like to see the council at least see the list and weigh in. We can't market, I don't think it's going to be a large, there may be slivers of land here and there, but I, I don't think there's going to be too many Groton Heights on it, to be honest with you, in terms of significant development potential.
So Greg, and then Bonnie, and then, because we do have a two-person, a two-speaking limit, so we're kind of one above it, but if they make it short and.
It'll be short. Yeah, I think their process definitely has to start after we decide we want to sell something. That just makes common sense. I mean, we voted on some of these tax foreclosure properties that, you know, we've looked at and there's no town use. We voted on those that we want to sell them. I think that's the process. Then you guys get them, prioritize the list, and go forward. It seems like that's the process we've had. I'm not quite sure why we're straying from that.
Bonnie.
I just wanted to say, when I said we could put a, our vote on it, I didn't mean that we'd pick, like we were doing the submarine. We could each put one through, whatever it is, and give it to them, and they could take that information as a collective thought process on, you know, what if we all said Groton Heights was number one? I mean, it'd just give them some more data.
Okay. Diane.
I don't know how this list of property got segwayed into the empty schools with the school project. I just know that I'm asked all the time what is going to happen with those empty schools if the school project goes through, but I don't even know why that was brought up.
I only brought it up because it's the process that we're talking, I think it's a good process that Paige and John are laying out. That's the reason why I brought it up, is I think this is, this could serve us very well, and except for really William Sealy, there has been a neighborhood process. William Sealy, and it was the council that wanted to move ahead with that, and even though we were using it, and it's not a criticism, but there was criticism afterwards, like, well, why didn't we follow a neighborhood task force process? And certainly, the mayor has spent many hours, and one particular task group and others from the council in the past spent a lot of time on Groton Heights. And years and years ago, we had a similar process for Mystic McCaddie, where we tried to engage the neighborhood. And in most cases, there has been consensus. It, I mean, No Ink was a little different, but I, I think what we ended up with was what the majority of folks was looking for. It may have not been what the council, what was a new council at the time was looking for, in terms of some members wanting just to sell properly. But that's the only reason I raised it, Diane, because I think it's the process that, that hopefully will serve us well in the future.
Okay. Go.
Is it proper to make a referral now? I'd like to figure out what we're doing with Colonel Ledgerd. You know, let's, I don't know what we need to do to get that on the table, to get that into their hands, or.
We, we should probably talk about it. We could put it as a, as a referral and discuss it separately. So, great. We're going to move on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Are you staying? North Stonington Road Bridge?
No, thank you.
That's not your department?
No.
That'd be Gary, right?
We have enough on our.
Gary lost. I think.
We're going to look at 20160179 to North Stonington Road Bridge. I think this is on the agenda. We have Gary here to discuss, we have ramped the speed on this bridge. I think that we've heard from Stonington and from the Old Mystic Fire Chief. The Old Mystic Fire Chief is desperately seeking the bridge to be restored. And I think Mark looked into Stonington and can't find anybody in the budget yet.
Yeah, I mean, this is only, as the mayor noted, this is only on the agenda because we did receive a letter a couple of weeks ago from Conway Landrigan, who are council for the Mystic, the Old Mystic Fire District. I, I think either the letter contains some misinformation or there's a misunderstanding. This, and I wanted Gary to be here to kind of take us through where we are. We have briefed the council in the past, because as, you know, at this point, we are proceeding with design work. There was not money approved in this last year's budget, but we do have money available as a result of the initial project in which we got reimbursed from the contract from the design engineer. So I think there's a total of approximately $90,000. Gary, plus or minus?
It's minus because we had to pay for this preliminary study. So it's a little bit north of 75, 80.
Why don't I stop there and you kind of take us through where, where we are?
I think the council has the letter here, and I'll just jump up right back down to the, to the bottom line of nuts and bolts. The Public Works Department's taking the lead on this. Stonington has let the Public Works Department of Towne of Groton take the lead on this, as we had done with the, with the other attempt to get the bridge designed and be built. We've been notified by the state that they are, they, by the end of July, end of this month, the approved local bridge funding program will be published by the state. And what that will do is they will prioritize the bridges in the state of Connecticut, match it to the funding that's available that they have, and then make the awards of the grant. If the, this bridge is granted, an award by the local bridge program, the reimbursement rate would be about 48%. Total cost of the bridge that's being proposed out there that we looked at is a $1.2 million structure. That's the item that was placed in the capital improvement program. So for right now, we've done enough work to submit for the local bridge program, which we have. The local bridge, people up at DOT have been, have been talking to the town engineer, our town engineer, on, on the application, and we are waiting for their, for their award or their, their award if, if we get it awarded. If it's awarded, as Mark had said, we, we have money in escrow, about $75,000, $80,000 from the last settlement from the other engineering firm, that will carry us through the preliminary design, enough to get a good number of what each town should place in its, in its CIP projects, CIP budgets for the next fiscal year. I did provide a schedule in my package here, which dovetails real nicely into the approval process for next year. Even though Stony, we've contacted Stonington, even though the First Selectmen and Public Works people have said that the Board of Finance could take this up and fund their portion of it, they have not approved any funds right now. But Stony could, could move and get the funding done. The question really is, is twofold, is one is that, and this is what we briefed the council on, the budget thing, we don't need any funds right now to carry this on. If there is a local bridge grant, I would recommend to the council that we proceed in using the money that we have, that Stonington's money and our money, to prepare the preliminary design, to get the cost estimates down onto what we could bring back to both the town council and the First Selectmen in Stonington. And then the question comes, do we want to fund that, that type of, of infrastructure? The, and I did note it in my memo here, is the, the letter from, from the Old Mystic's attorneys did have the picture of the violation as a front of the general store. The truck on the right is parked in a, in front of a no parking sign, in front of a hydrant in a painted yellow curb. Some enforcement out here may be of, of help in the near term to keep traffic flowing through that area. So just wanted to update to the council right now, we did check back with the state later, earlier this week, and they have not made a, and they have not made a determination of the local bridge grant awards for this year.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Karen. Has, has a determination been made by both Groton and Stonington that this is a bridge that we all agree needs to be replaced? I mean, I thought at one point the question was, do we even want to do this? So I'm, guess I'm a little unsure as to why we're moving ahead in funding design or any of that, if, if ultimately, we're going to say, look, we don't need this bridge, we're not going to spend the money for it, so we're just going to barricade it off and it's going to stay the way it is.
At, at least I could talk about the design work, and maybe Mark can talk about the policy decisions. Right now, we've used, by authorization to the town council was to move forward to get, you know, what should we replace, what could be, what would be the replacement for that bridge? Something very simple or something very detailed? We hired an engineer, took a look at it, and $1.2, $1.3 million is what the type of replacement for that structure. Whether it is needed or not, the Old Mystic Fire Company for years have said they need this because it is, their fire station is across the way, they need to respond in the most direct direction, the shortest distance to the structures on the side of the Towne of Groton. The structure's in that area, there is no public water in that area. There is public water on the Stonington side, but if you, once you cross that brook, there is no public water in that area, so they can't hook up to a hydrant. So I can talk about bringing it up to this design where the town council and the Board of Selectmen can make a decision whether they like to fund this, this type of structure, whether it be at $1.2 million divided by two, or $600,000 divided by two. But we're getting enough facts and information now, so both policymakers can make a decision. I don't know, Mark, is there anything else?
Yeah, I think initially, when, when we realized this bridge needed some work, I think generally the feeling was on the part of the council, and I assume the RTM was, you know, if we could put it back together for 50 to $100,000 for each community, it's probably, and get, I don't know, 10 years, 15 years, it's probably worth doing. I, I think when it became known that the cost is a lot more, I, I don't know what the answer is to, it's a great question, but how, I don't know how people can address that question until you really know what the costs are. And I think, you know, I think we've, we've, we're trying to use the available money as cautiously as possible, and when we became aware that there may be some state or federal funding, which Gary mentioned, made mention of in terms of an application that would provide maybe close to 50%, 40, 50%, of the funding, I, I think that's a discussion the town council probably needs to have with the Board of Selectmen. I, I guess when I got this letter and, you know, I was a little perturbed at the second to the last paragraph is, you know, it's noting that. to the last paragraph, is, you know, it's noting that Stonington is committed to the replacement of the bridge, but it wasn't budgeted. We essentially have done all of the administrative work for the, for the last couple of years on this. Gary, Gary and Greg Hanover, and other members of the staff. And so, yes, we put the money in the budget, and it was cut out through the budget process. The comments that I heard were not so much, we don't want to replace the bridge, it was more kind of kicking the can down the road, you have this other money, you're not really, are you going to be able to build it this year? And the answer was, no, we're not going to be able to build it this year, because we still have to do the final engineering and so forth. But I think ultimately, that's the question that needs to be asked. Is it, is it something that, you know, were we desirable to replace it if we could have done it for $100,000 split two ways, you know, with us and Stonington? I think the answer was yes. At $1.2 million, or some other number yet to be further refined? I don't know what the answer's going to be to that. But I, I just find it, like I said, I, this letter deserves a response of some type, and before we put a response together, I wanted to have a discussion with the council, because I, you know, at least we put the money in the budget. And if people listen to the, some of the discussion, it may be wishful thinking on my mind, but I think it was really more, it was cut out because the money was not specifically needed for next year. There were other things that needed to happen, or could happen. It would have been nice to have the money approved. But we, you know, unless you tell us to pull back, or somebody tells us to pull back and stop the engineering work, I interpreted that we still wanted to go ahead and at least get this application in, at least know, are we going to get some significant help from the state? Gary, you may have mentioned, when, when do we think we would hear back from the state on, in time for next year's budget process?
There are goals, make the awards by the end of this July.
Oh, actually, make the awards?
Make, make the awards, that there, they will have a list of bridges that are eligible based on their funding, and then there's a whole application process starting. So if they come out with that, then the next phase would be doing the, the design work. And we have money all the way through the preliminary design, maybe 50, 60 percent. We have the money available in escrow, and then that will give us then those, those detailed cost estimates. Right now, they're very broad brush, it's about $1.2 million. But what would be looked at a little harder is the permitting issues, although we have a pretty good handle on those. So what we would be doing is refining those numbers to go back, and that would be in time for it to be placed into the CIP budget for Groton and...
So maybe when we hear from the state, hopefully by the end of July, one way or the other, you know, we would come back to you, brief you, and maybe that would be a good time to have a discussion with Stonington. We, we used to have occasional meetings with the selectmen in Stonington, we haven't done that in a while. And, because I, we did, when I had heard, or when we had heard that, you know, Stonington was ready to go, Gary and his staff called over there, and, no, it was not put in anybody's budget. The fact that the finance committee could approve it mid-year is no different than what the council and the RTM can do. And maybe the, the fire district doesn't know that, but they probably...
Dean?
Who's council for the town of Stonington? I was going to say that the town of Stonington get the same letter, but as you correctly pointed out, they, the letter to us points out that Stonington's ready to go. I wonder if this letter to Stonington says Groton's ready to go. Sooner or later, this is going to come up in front of us. Once, everything is, is, it's going to come up in front of us as an immediate, hey, do we want to spend our half of one, say, $1.2 million? At which point, we will come back to where we normally go, which is, do we really want to spend this kind of money? We're looking to save money, because as we said before, there's never such a, no such thing as a fat year. Which will raise the question of, is the bridge necessary? Public safety's paramount. And so we're going to ask that question. Is the bridge necessary for public safety? And I don't know that it matters. Suppose, suppose the bridge was never there, and the fire district had said, boy, wouldn't it be needed if there was a bridge there? That's essentially what we've got here. We're trying to, it just so happens that we're trying to put a bridge back where there was. So we're going to run into this question again. I read this letter, so I don't want to say anymore about this. I read this letter, and I'm thinking, boy, I know what, I know what Brian is doing. Brian's laying the groundwork for something here. I would take this letter, I would throw it to our lawyer and not say another word.
Gary?
I kind of, I kind of agree with you, Dean. I mean, it's CC'd to most people, but it's not CC'd to the police in Stonington, and there's obviously traffic violations causing the blocking of the corner, you know what I'm saying? I have a question for Gary, though. He said, we have the money in escrow to do this. Is we, us and Stonington?
It's ours and Stonington.
It's not just we, Groton?
That is correct.
That's, that's the impression I got, so, okay.
That's correct. It's, it's our money. Both Stonington and Groton went and did the, put in 50 percent for the design, the construction of the quick fix that didn't work. So we kept the money, they know it, they let us keep it, it's an escrow at the town attorney's office.
Okay.
Yeah, what's funny about it is, anytime there's a hot button issue, and you would think a bridge missing was something that you've had for a long time, would draw like, you know, 20 people would be here tonight, or 30 people, because they need this bridge so bad. I did, I did speak to the fire department down there, and he thinks he needs it, and it may be just for the fire department, because it doesn't seem like, there may be one or two letters we maybe get from citizens, but it doesn't seem like it's this overwhelming problem from, yeah, you, you probably got a couple too, but it's not, it's not a, it's not like the, when we did the sign thing, there were 60 people here, you know? So it's not that hot button issue that people are, so it doesn't make me think that it's this, this urgent need. But the fire, the fire department felt like they needed it. But again, if it's people just blocking traffic because they're parking wrong, then, then maybe that gets addressed, and that solves it too.
Diane?
I just want to make sure I get this right. So you're estimating $1.2 million for the bridge?
Correct.
If the state ponies up 48 percent, we're looking at approximately $600,000. At that point, you're going to come to us and ask for 300, and 300 from Stonington? Is that right?
Well, what Mark has, has recommended is that once we get the award letter, I'm being positive from the state, that we come back here and have that discussion, because I will need to spend some money out of the escrow to do, to proceed with the design work and the permitting work. And then we'll nail down at $1.2 million. Is it 1.2? Is it 1? Is it, you know, whatever number it gets nailed down, the number gets refined. And then, to me, my recommendation is, it gets placed in the, the CIP or the town council can make a supplemental appropriation.
I guess my question is, in that last pot of the 600,000, what happens if Stonington says we don't have our half?
We don't do the project. There, there has to be agreements or money put up, or something. I wouldn't go for it unless the money, as they did in the first portion, they did put up their funding, and we could tap into it, so. But those would have to be some sort of formal agreement, I would think.
Thank you.
I recall the discussions we've had in the past, that there's a debate that we don't need the bridge, that if we, if it was, you're right, it came down to money, to a certain extent. But at $1.2 million, you know, there was a consensus that we didn't need the bridge, and the Old Mystic Fire Department is saying that we do. Is, is there somebody we can turn to, who can look at it and tell us whether or not that bridge is essential for safety?
One of the things that I mentioned is, in that area of town, is that there is no public water on our side of that brook, but foot brook. And there was some email from the Old Mystic Fire Chief, is that the issue is if the bridge wasn't built, then they would have to lay holes and close roads down, which probably makes sense, they have to come from the Stonington side, but again, I'm not a firefighter. So one of my questions would be, is that if firefighting requires, we should have public water, and that area doesn't have public water, can we entice Aquarian to run a main, to run their main across the brook? Or tie into the, the water main that's on Cowell Hill and Route 84 to create a loop? Is there something more that could be done with this money that would benefit everyone in that area, not only with public water, but also with firefighting, firefight, firefighting flows? But again, I'm not a fireman, I don't drive that equipment or anything else, so, but those would be some of the other issues to look at. You know, would that be at a cheaper substitute and have a better benefits, have more benefits?
I mean, speaking for myself, it's, it's hard to understand whether there's a public safety issue. And if the powers that be, whoever those powers are, say that there's a serious safety issue by not having that bridge done, I'm inclined to have the bridge done. But, you know, I understand that the Old Mystic Fire Chief is saying that we do need it, but we've heard from others that we don't, so. Dean, I'm sorry, Karen?
It seems to me that the, the concern is more about the congestion at the intersection of Main Street and Route 27, and the hazards, the, the turning radius is not sufficient. So definitely, Stonington's going to have to be more vigilant about keeping the illegal parking under control there. But Route 27 is a state road, and I'm wondering if there isn't also something we could do about talking to the state about increasing the turning radius at that intersection? You know, widening the road, something like that, short of, you know, building a bridge. It seems to me that that maybe could be an option to look at, too.
Great. So the consensus is, we're going to wait, and you're going to come back?
End of July, beginning of August.
And can we see if Stonington can be here for that?
We could certainly invite them.
I think it'd be great to have the, the first selectmen in, selectmen here. Thank you, Gary. That brings us to 2016-0178 Groton Heights School, Bill Memorial Library land swap. And there's a picture in the packet of, the both properties kind of have an L. And there was a talk in the past of, of swapping so that they were perfect rectangles on each side. And Mark, put it on the agenda so that, because there's been some...
We had recent, I had recently received an excerpt from the Bill Memorial Library Board, Board of Directors meeting. I, I do want to note, I am a member of the Board of Directors of Bill Memorial. I was not at that meeting, so I don't have any firsthand knowledge of what specifically was said at the meeting, but Janet Downs, who is the secretary for the, for the committee, did send me an excerpt of the minutes. Quite a few, well, four or five years ago, we did approach the, the library about, did they want to do a land swap? And so, if you could all go to Attachment 6, this map, it's, it's a little busy, I apologize for that. But first and foremost, if you went to the town's GIS system, the outline of the land that is associated with the school, and the outline of the land that is associated with Bill Memorial is wrong. That is absolutely wrong. And it's something that we're attempting to get corrected. So right now, the, the property lines for the, those two properties, Fort Griswold is in the green box, basically the monument and the restrooms. The yellow dash line is the configuration of the school property. Now, if you look, if you went to GIS, it would include all of that yellow, plus the blue. The blue, though, belongs to Bill Memorial Library, and it's enclosed in the, the red dash line. So the red dash line is the property boundary for the, the library, and the yellow is the Groton Heights School property. The blue area is a portion of the Bill Memorial Library, which the library graciously leased to the Board of Ed for many, many years. And, and we've known that. I mean, that, that is not news, we've known that forever, or I've known that at least forever. But it is not actually owned by the Town of Groton. Even though it looks like it's part of the school, there have been school improved swing sets and so forth have been built on it, it's been part of the playground that was associated with the school. When we went to the Bill Memorial Library a number of years ago to talk about a potential swap, and the swap was to get rid of, or to trade, to, to give them basically the front, what we would, most of us perceived to be the front yard of the school, that narrow strip that goes out to Monument Street, which would be right adjacent to the library, would give them a nice rectangular piece of property. And in exchange for that, we would hold on to the blue area. At the time, they were not interested. This, this was probably at least five years ago, maybe longer. That was not something they were interested. It sounded to me, or my recollection is, is that previous to that discussion, there had been some thought possibly of maybe building some housing on that blue area, maybe some affordable elderly housing, or something like that. I never saw any plans, but that, that, that's what I recall. And I, I should note, in the middle of all this is a paper street, known as Library Street, which is owned by the Town of Groton. So it just is a complicated factor.
What a surprise.
Yeah, yes. But it, there's not a road there. It is, if you've ever been to the Bill Memorial Library, and you've parked in their parking lot off the road, their access drive is within the right-of-way of the, of the, of the school, of the Library Street right-of-way. So at this, and for the last couple of meetings, or at least the last two meetings, including the last one that I was not at, there has been some discussion of, well, maybe, you know, maybe we should, this is the board, saying, maybe we should approach the town, maybe that would be a good thing to swap land. I'm not really sure what's the genesis of that. When we had approached them previously, the, the thought was that the front, what is the front lawn to the school may be of value to them for future expansion. This was around the time, approximately the time when the Community Foundation was making available $100,000 grants to all the local libraries, and the bill was looking at potentially building a community room, either within their existing footprint, or outside of the existing footprint. But for whatever reason, they were not interested. They are now, I, they are talking about possibly future expansion, they have no definite plans, but I think there's been some rethinking that this may be a good thing. I think they picked up the town's interest to sell the property. And so I wanted to bring this to you simply for information tonight. I did not invite anybody in from the billboard, because I wanted the council to have the opportunity to kind of think about it. I don't know how many of you are that familiar with the property. I think it does need to be, as was talked about in our earlier discussion, something we need to have planning evaluate. It's nice to have a front yard to the Groton Heights, but it really, that's not where people are going to park, it's not probably where people are going to walk into the, maybe visitors will. There's nothing suggesting that we couldn't possibly reserve a right-of-way for pedestrian access to the building, even if we switch property with the Bill Memorial. I do think the blue area ultimately probably has more utility for the town, depending on the reuse of, of the school. It's, I, I think if there was an expansion put onto the building, or some freestanding units built, you'd probably want to do it there, not in the front lawn of, of what is the front lawn to the school now. So it's really just for information purposes. I mean, if you have strong feelings, absolutely not, or absolutely yes, that would be great to know. But I wasn't looking for that, I just wanted to give you a heads up that we have recently received a communications from...
Ronnie?
So it looks like the blue area is a lot smaller in square footage than the thing. Were they entertaining an even swap, or would there be some monitor?
I don't, I, I think at this point, they were looking as an even swap, but I don't, and none of the maps that they have, this was something that Public Works put together quite a few years ago, clearly shows the, the Library Street. I mean, I think that's a very legitimate concern, and, and maybe you still keep a swath of land to Monument Street, and you try to do it as a, on a square footage. I haven't measured it, so, and this is only a schematic at this point.
If you do it straight down, it, it's getting awful close to the building. You don't have much of a setback. If you cut this away like that.
Yeah, I mean, we could leave a little bit more front yard. Yeah, I mean, we could do something like that.
I just have, I just have a quick question. So if this land swap goes through, it sounds like to me that they're going to get this narrow piece, and we're going to just continue using the land that we're getting, as we've been using it for years?
Well, the lease was with the Board of Ed. We technically don't have access to the property now. In fact, an issue came up this weekend with parking. Somebody was out there parking on the Groton Heights School property in this area, and it got the attention of the Bill Memorial... of the Bill Memorial, somebody on the Bill Memorial staff or board. So we don't, the lease isn't with us. It was with the Board of Ed. As far as I'm concerned, it's expired. But if the improved, there's still a fence up, it's still fenced off. There had, they have expressed maybe some interest in getting the fence down, at least between the long finger of land going out to Monument Street and the library, because the fence was probably put, was put up when it was a school to keep school children from running across their yard, probably. But it's an eyesore. It's an old fence. It collects leaves. We get inquiries every fall about when are we going to come out and get, not from the bill, but from the neighbors in the area. Because you have two fences that, you know, right close to each other, 50 feet apart or so, that just collect all the leaves from the, that are blowing around.
I would just be curious, see whatever planning says, because it's hard, it's hard for us to look at it and make, but I agree with you, Bonnie. If you, if you did cut that straight back, there would be, you know, it'd be like a four-foot sidewalk behind the property or something. If they have a good fence there, that'd be tough.
Yeah.
So I think the planning is probably going to be the best, best rule.
Greg?
Yeah, with the plans to sell this property, I think it's best in their hands to at least make a recommendation on what they think would be the best way to market that property. And maybe let the commercial folks decide, you know, the best way forward.
Dean?
Are we aware, off the top of our heads, collectively, aware of any deed restrictions with respect to this property?
There are not deed restrictions that would prohibit us from selling.
Okay, so it's, that strip in front of the school is all ours. We can dispose of it as-
As far as from the review that we did probably six, seven years ago, the property was acquired for the purposes of building a school. We built the school. That doesn't mean it has to be used as a school, according to the town attorney, forever. So, I mean, it was, I think that's where sometimes people kind of, oh, well, we bought the property for a school. Well, yes, we did, you know. But it wasn't given to us for only a school to be there forever. So-
Yeah, my other question had to do with, right, it's if the swap would have to be considered in the context of the value of the school, were we to sell it? In other words, do we, is, by doing the swap, do I render it less, you know, access to Monument? Or does it render the property less valuable, more valuable?
Well, I think that's what, the value is in the future use, and I think that's why we need to look at it. I mean, it's nice to have that front lawn. It would be nice to make sure that there isn't a three-story building built there, because the value of those, if they're residential units, is the view. It's unbelievable. Just absolutely unbelievable. But I think, you know, that doesn't mean you can't put restrictions on what the bill, they're not going to be building a three-story building.
No, what you do is you get an easement.
Yeah.
We get a permanent easement, preserving the view.
Harry?
Yeah, my, two of my boys went to the school, and that was just always talked about that leased property, because that was a playground. That's where the kids just went and played. And I'm sure that lease has gone away because the Board of Ed, now using it, well, it's our property. We're not paying a lease, so it's gone back. And that's where we were going to put the sub-sale.
Well, and I think in part, maybe that's why some members of the bill changed their mind, because they were very much, or certain members of the board were very much against that. And that may have, you know, we were looking to put as a potential location, the sale of the USS Groton on that finger of land. Still think it's a great location personally.
I still do. I mean, I was on the site committee with you. That's what we recommended as our first choice.
Created an uproar in the neighborhood, in some quarters, and the Bill Memorial Board was not in favor at all. And we had somebody from Deep come down. She wasn't in favor. I think it's pretty short-sighted, but I'm not sure we want to put that one again.
It was, I went by there the day of the fireworks. There was somebody standing in the driveway into Groton Heights, and they were selling parking places for 10 bucks apiece.
We've got pictures of that.
Okay, so I went right by there because I-
We used to, and it's created a fair amount of confusion. I mean, years ago, we, the town, used to make parking available there. But I believe it was only the paved parking area. And it was our police to support, some of you may recall, the Marine Maritime Academy that we ran in the summer. We haven't run that in the last four or five years.
There's only about 12 spots here.
That's all that, I think that's all that we've rented out. This parking, the pictures that I have, goes all the way down to the-
Yeah, somebody made some big bucks parking cars in there.
Who was it?
It wasn't me.
I don't remember the name of the group. I haven't.
It was a Ford of it. Hester.
So, anybody have any other questions on that? We'll move on. There's no committee referral items as per the town council referral list. Go to other business.
I just want to ask Mark, you've been in touch with the two police chiefs, Mark, and trying to get a meeting together about the dispatch?
No, I have not.
There is, I did meet with the mayor of the city, and we did discuss, having some kind of meeting, and we haven't figured it all out yet.
Okay.
Bonnie?
I had some emails back and forth with Bruce McDermott from the RTM, and I told him I would bring up the possibility of town council looking at some kind of limit to our spending for the school referendum. That's something that they're looking for from us. But they also wanted to propose maybe a once-a-month meeting between the mayor and the floor leader, or some of the members of the RTM. And I think they've doubted you about that, so. Just wanted to bring that up, and I think it's a good idea.
Sure.
I actually got an email from someone asking about River Road. I think I put you, tagged you in on the email.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something that's in the-
I've sent an email to Gary. I didn't hear back from him this afternoon, or I haven't seen his response. I don't believe it's on any future year list, but I wanted to check. And I think, I think he responded to your email basically saying, I got the impression, he's already checked with Public Works, saying it's not on a few, but I'm going to be with Gary tomorrow.
What was the question?
They want someone who's asking about paving River Road and saying it's in pretty bad shape down along the river. Well, we're talking about Ole Mystic property. And he thought maybe it was on the, I thought maybe it was on the to-do list.
When I get an answer from Gary, I'll-
And then the other one you probably know was Diane, the Pearl Street property, the sidewalk and the wall. We approved the money last year. And I think, just to give you a heads up, I think they plan on, neighbors plan on coming in about August 2nd. That's the next time they can, just to kind of address what's going on with it. But I think there was, it cost more than they thought it was going to. So it's one of these ongoing issues, and you'll see, you'll hear about it soon, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, this is Ferguson's property, the house with all the gingerbread and the beautiful. There's a sidewalk there. We had, primarily through Public Works, been communicating with her. It's a sidewalk that's way above the grade of the road, 18, 24 inches. And there are probably old curb stones that now look like a retaining wall, or had looked like a retaining wall. And she, she's been great to work with over the years. We've got a project approved, but the project was predicated that we would be able to receive grading rights from her. And because you got to find grade somewhere. You either got to raise the road, which would be fairly expensive, or you need to be able to grade into her property. And we had, the project had been put together, you know, with the thought that whatever grading rights you would need, they would grant. They, for whatever reason, have changed their mind. They don't want to provide us grading rights. I believe the last email I saw for her, from her, was that, that she is, I'm trying to make sure I say this right, that I believe she's fine without the sidewalk. It's the neighbors that want the sidewalk. And so I don't know if they're going to come in or not, but I haven't, well, I've been out of town for the last couple of weeks, so I don't, I don't have an update on that. But the project initially, working hand-in-hand with Mrs. Ferguson to come up with a design and so forth, but I think something changed possibly somewhere.
Well, it collapsed. It collapsed.
Well, it's collapsed before, too. That's not, that's just a recent, that's why we wanted to do something, because that wall, we've had issues with in the past. And yes, there was a portion that collapsed because a truck backed into it a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, or whatever.
Is this Pearl Street?
Pearl Street in knowing. Got you.
Right at the corner there.
Yep.
What's the history of the road? Did they think that, because it looks like it was high at one point, and then it just dug it down here. I mean, that sidewalk is high.
Probably the sidewalk, I don't, we don't know how the, I mean, it wasn't put in by the town. It was probably the property owner put it in 100 and something years ago, and chances are, the road was probably dirt. So when the road got paved, you know, there was some geometric standards applied. It's still not great, but it probably got lowered at that point. We have an old picture. I believe we got it from Mrs. Ferguson, and the sidewalk certainly was not way up in the air. I mean, it's, it's a good, a good step to get up on. So I believe where we are is we're still talking to Mrs. Ferguson and her husband about some alternatives. I think I had sent you an email, or a part of an email, or an email that I got from somebody, from Gary about a latest update. I'll double check. Joe, if I didn't do that, I apologize. But we haven't given up on it. But I think she's okay with what was agreed to. It's the neighbors that are, and she doesn't really want to get in the middle of it. And I don't blame her.
Greg?
Real quickly, yeah, we spoke a while ago about bringing Thomas Road back up, about what our plans are for that, you know, that the plans have stalled for the bike way. I'd like to bring that back up, because it is dangerous. It's in bad shape. There's people that walk down there. I drive it all the time.
We can certainly do that based on the discussion that we had at budget time. We're proceeding with the project, trying to get, acquire the easements from the Ackleys, which own the golf course property. We've had a couple of good discussions with both Cal and Bob Ackley, and have drafted some easements, documents for them. We don't need to acquire their land. We need an easement, both a temporary construction easement and a permanent easement for the multipurpose path. We're getting a lot of pressure from the state and from the cog to either move the project forward or they're going to pull the funding. We've met with DOT around them three, four weeks ago to update them. We're not there yet. I did have a conversation with one of the Ackleys this afternoon about something else, another piece of property in town. But we did talk about that, and he reiterated, you know, I think we were in agreement on most aspects of the compensation, like we, unfortunately, we're just not, I don't mean unfortunately, we're not, we're just not dealing with two property owners. There's, I believe he mentioned 12 property owners involved. So both Cal Ackley and Bob Ackley have had to deal with other family members to kind of tee this up so that it gets approved in a timely manner. But we can certainly put it back on the next agenda if you want a further update. But we are, I took the, you know, when we broached this at budget time, that, you know, maybe we, given all the problems that we were having, and given the poor condition of the road, maybe we ought to pull the plug on the project and take the town money that we've put aside for this, the match, and repave the road. I took our previous conversations to be, nobody was really interested in doing that, that you didn't want us to give up the ghost at this point, so.
Well, it depends on how long it's going to take. It's, you know, it's in bad shape.
Okay, well, then I, so you're not so much advocating get the sidewalk in, you're advocating make a decision, and the road needs to-
I don't know how long we've been talking this, this-
This project has been around-
Decades.
Yeah.
Over 15.
Decades.
Crazy.
I just know there's people that try to walk in the road at night, and it's either try to, you know, pave it, widen it maybe a little bit to give them the path to get off the road.
Well, I, you know, I'll do whatever the council wants. I think we've made some great progress with the Ackleys. We still have the adjacent property owner to deal with, but we've been told that, or it's been suggested to us, however the Ackleys go, that's how they'll go. So that's what we're basically focusing. They supposedly use the same attorney and whatever. That may or may not be the case, based on some comments that we got from the Ackleys. So we're, our primary focus right now is to nail down the easements. We've re, we staked it quite a while ago so that they could visually see where the easements are. As part of the, as I mentioned, we need a, we need a construction easement and a permanent easement. There is some compensation for the land. There will be a new netting, new net installed along the road to keep golf balls on their side. But all that landscaping, all the, all the large evergreen trees have to come down, and that's been a concern of theirs. And they, probably the most important thing is they now have a new operator of the golf course that just is starting up this year. So they're very sensitive about interrupting his operation. We think we can work around that. And actually, they had asked that we prepare a letter that we can get to the operator of the golf course for him to sign off on, which we will be doing. So I'm hopeful, because if we can't move this thing forward, we're going to lose the money.
Okay.
Can we move for you, Karen?
Second.